Good evening and welcome to the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Walnut Creek Planning Commission. Will the Secretary please take the role?
Commissioner Kwak?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Klopp?
Here.
Commissioner Reiser?
Here.
Commissioner Nate Ting?
Here.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Here.
Chair Strongman?
Here. And moving on to item number two, which is the consent calendar, we do have one item on the consent calendar, which is the minutes of the October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Would somebody like to make a motion or pull the item for more discussion?
Motion to accept the minutes into the record.
Second.
And will the Secretary please call the role?
Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nate Ting?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And item number three is our public communications. This is the opportunity for anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment on any subject that is not on the agenda to come forward and please give us your comments.
I think it's on the agenda that here's the possible cell phone tower going over to the high school?
That is actually on the, and it actually will be continued. We'll get to that later.
Okay, so now about the time.
But if you wanted to make a comment on it now, you can.
I'm very much against it.
Please go forward and...
I haven't been heard in a while. I'm very sorry, but...
But it's being continued right now, isn't it? Excuse us one second. Yeah. We'll take your comments for the record, but we're not actually going to be talking about the AT&amp;T Wireless at this point in time. It'll be continued to the twentieth, to the twelfth. But we'll take your comments and put them on the record for next time.
Okay, I, how much time do I have?
Two minutes.
Okay, so I am very much...
Stitch your name, please.
Oh, my name's Carolyn Alekna. I live directly across the street from North Gate High School at Castle Rock, and my child will be exposed to this cell phone tower twenty-four seven pretty much as she goes to school there. And then later on, my son will be exposed to it as well. My brother was three years old when he got leukemia, so my parents had our house tested for EMF. We found it was very high right by his bedroom. We eventually moved because we felt like there was enough to make us worry that. We didn't want any other kids getting cancer. And so, you know, I lived on Park Boulevard when they were thinking about putting up a cell phone tower on the church seapole. And so I did my research. This was maybe in two, I don't know what year. It was quite some time ago when my children were very little. And did my research. You can't get away from EMF. It goes through concrete, so you can maybe block RF. I haven't done the research on that, but I know there's measures they take to try to shield schools from stuff, but that I know of, you can't block the magnetic field that it creates. And the way you are safer from it is by going further away from it. So there's a lot of studies that show like childhood leukemia and magnetic fields in Japan, a case control study of childhood leukemia and residential power frequency magnetic fields in Japan. I have a really great article from the Environmental Health Trust. It, extensive public published scientific evidence indicates that radio frequency radiation at levels compliant with federal government limits can cause cancer, increase oxidative stress, genetic damage, structural and functional changes of the reproductive system, memory deficits, behavioral problems, and neurological impacts. We consider radio frequency to be a human carcinogen based on the current body of evidence. Many of these effects could be irreversible with grave consequences for our children's future.
Two minutes. Thank you very much.
Sorry.
You're welcome to come back on.
I would love to present you with these articles.
You could send that to the Planning Commission, our Secretary there, and he'll make sure we get that for our next meeting on the twelfth. So thank you very much. Welcome to come back on the twelfth. And anyone else for public comments? Seeing none, we'll close, close public comments and bring it back to the Commission, where I have to ask everybody if we have any ex parte communications with anything else on the agenda. Commissioner Ward?
Yeah, I need to disclose that I had a telephone conversation with Brian Hirahara regarding item four F.
Okay, thank you. And anyone else?
Same.
Okay.
I did also.
Okay. Thank you. And moving on to our public hearings, and the first item is the AT&amp;T, and it is being continued to December twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Moving on to Project B, which is the Square Guys Pizza. Okay, I'm being told I need to do a motion to continue.
Move to continue the matter to December twelfth.
Correct.
Second.
Thank you. Will you please take the role?
Yes. Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nate Ting?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And moving on to the Square Guy Pizza, Square Pie Guys. Sorry. You are serving, they are serving pizza, I believe, at some point. With staff, presentation now.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Strongman and Commissioners. My name is Stephen Cook. I'm an Assistant Planner here with the city. Before you this evening is an administrative use permit and design review application for the new restaurant, Square Pie Guys, located at one ninety-one Pringle Avenue. Before we begin, there are a couple of housekeeping items I'd like to address. First, there's a typo in the AUP draft resolution included as Attachment One. In Section Two, Finding Two, Paragraph Two, it should reference conditions of approval number thirteen. Additionally, the Paragraph Three should reference conditions of approval number fourteen. These revisions are illustrated on the slide for your reference. Second, in Section Three, Condition Number Five of the AUP draft resolution, the language should be amended to allow alcohol service both inside the tenant space and in the private outdoor dining area. The site is not located within the outdoor dining overlay district, so this revision is necessary. Again, the change is illustrated on the slide for your reference. The site is located at the intersection of Pringle Avenue and North California Boulevard. It is surrounded by a variety of uses, including office developments to the north, mixed-use developments to the east, the Bart Transit Station to the south, and the I six eighty to the west. The zoning district is planned development twenty-one thirteen, and the site is not located within the outdoor dining overlay district. Aerial images are provided for your reference. The proposal's for a new pizzeria-style restaurant with daily hours of operations from eleven thirty AM to eleven, I mean, ten thirty PM, Monday through Sunday. The restaurant is requesting an outdoor dining area located entirely on private property. This area will measure four hundred twenty-five square feet and includes fourteen tables, twenty-eight chairs, and a perimeter enclosure with retractable belts. All outdoor furniture will be non-permanent, and samples of the proposed outdoor furniture are shown on the slide for your reference. The restaurant's also requesting alcohol service, including beer and wine, to be available both inside the tenant space and in the proposed outdoor dining area. Additionally, decal signage is proposed, which complies with the standards outlined in the Waymark's Master Sign Program. Rendering of that window signage is included on the slide for your reference as well. To summarize the entitlements requested, the project is seeking an administrative use permit to allow the alcohol service until ten thirty PM and design review for the proposed outdoor dining area and window signage. Typically, these requests are reviewed at staff level. However, due to the site's planned development zoning designation, the AUP must be reviewed by the Planning Commission, which also grants Planning Commission authority over the design review. Listed are the required AUP findings. Staff has drafted a response to each finding contained in Attachment One, Administrative Use Permit Draft Resolution. Enlisted are the required design review findings. Staff has drafted a response to each finding contained in Attachment Two, Design Review Draft Resolution. The project is exempt from CEQA per Section fifteen-three-oh-one of the CEQA guidelines. The project will be located within an existing commercial tenant space. And staff is recommending to the Planning Commission to make two separate motions to determine that the project is exempt from CEQA under Section fifteen-three-oh-one existing facilities and adopt the resolution approving the administrative use permit and adopt a resolution approving the design review for Square Pie Guys located at one ninety-one Pringle Avenue, subject to the conditions of approval as amended. And that concludes staff's presentation. Staff's available for any questions you may have.
Thank you for your concise presentation. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Reiser?
Good presentation. Thank you. Is there any kind of like gate or fence around the outside area where alcohol is going to be served, or is it just tables on the sidewalk?
There's going to be a retractable belt. Let me see if I could go back to that slide. So, an example next to that blue chair, those standard belts, it's going to sort of enclose that whole section, separating that dining space from the public right away.
Okay. Other questions? Seeing none. Thank you. Do we have the applicant?
The applicant is here today and available to answer any questions you may have as well.
Open the public hearing and start out with the applicant, if he has any presentation.
Yeah, I didn't actually present a presentation. I was kind of more here for questions. Sorry. I'm Chris Maynor. I'm the Director of Operations for Square Pie Guys. I was more here to answer any questions, though. I didn't have a presentation available, but I am representing Mark, who is on his honeymoon right now. I know, lucky.
Lucky dog. Any questions for? Seeing none. We'll also open up the public hearing. Continue to, anyone else have, make any other comments about this project? Seeing none. Moving forward quickly, we will now close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for comments or motions.
I just want to thank you for the inclusion of the business plan information in the application, which clearly answered a number of questions that we regularly have about security cameras and staffing and training and trash and all that kind of stuff.
We have an amazing design team who does a tremendous job.
That was very good. Thank you. That was very helpful.
Absolutely.
Other comments? Discussion or motions? Yes, unfortunately, yes.
I'll move to adopt the resolution, Administrative Use Permit Application Number Y twenty-four-zero-sixty-one, Square Pie Guys at Pringle Avenue in Walnut Creek.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you. I'll second.
Would the Secretary please call the role?
Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nate Ting?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And moving on to the second potential resolution?
Land the plane, Ollie.
Land the plane. Oh, gosh, I have to open it up. No, I got it. The design review, move to pass the resolution, Design Review Application Number Y twenty-four dash zero sixty-one, Square Pie Guys on Pringle Avenue in Walnut Creek.
As amended.
As amended. That one's amended too?
I think so, right? Are they both or just the one?
I believe it's just the AUP that was amended.
Not amended.
Not amended.
And I'll still second it.
Will the Secretary please call the role?
Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nate Ting?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And moving on to item C, the lease term rental, I believe, has been withdrawn by the applicant. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we'll move on to the item D, which is the zoning updates for family daycare homes, zoning amendments. We'll start out with a staff report.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I'm Aaron Sage, Principal Planner, and here to present to you zoning updates for family daycare homes, the latest in a series of amendments to catch up with ever-evolving state law. Start off with some background. For many years, the state, the state Health and Safety Code has regulated what the state law refers to as family daycare homes. And in state law, that use is defined as a facility that regularly provides care, protection, and supervision for fourteen or fewer children in the provider's own home for periods of less than twenty-four hours per day. And basically, this is an area of state law that's been on the books for quite some time in recognition of the ongoing shortage of childcare that we have throughout the state. So to define two different types of small, two different types of family daycare homes, we have small ones, which are eight or fewer children, and those are currently allowed by right in our code and have been for many years. And then we have large family daycare homes, which are seven to fourteen children. And our code currently requires a large family daycare home permit, which is approved by the zoning administrator with the option for a public hearing if requested by an interested party who receives the notice of the permit. Now, under a recent state law from twenty nineteen, SB two thirty-four, the city and no local jurisdiction can no longer require any business license fee or tax for any family daycare home. Both small and large family daycare homes must be allowed by right, and no special restrictions can be applied to small or large family daycare homes. And by special restrictions, that means you can apply any restriction to this type of use that is not also applied generally to other residential uses. Now, the city has complied with SB thirty-four since it took effect at the beginning of twenty twenty. And this is really just a matter of updating our code to reflect state law and what our current practice already is. We always follow state law, and sometimes it takes a while to get our code to catch up with that, the actual practice. So these are the main amendments in the proposed ordinance. First off, to remove the requirement for a large family daycare home permit, so there would no longer be any notification to neighbors or any option for a hearing for this use. To list this use as a by-right use in all zones, just like for small family daycare homes, all zones that allow residential uses. To amend the use classifications for both small and large family daycare homes to make the number of children consistent with state law. And finally, to amend the definition of a home-based business that sits within our business license code such that family daycare homes would not be considered a home-based business and therefore would be exempt from obtaining a business license. So our staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution, making findings and recommending that the City Council adopt the proposed ordinance to amend Title Ten and Title Eight to be consistent with state law for family daycare homes. I'm available for any questions you might have. And also, I want to note that we have Assistant City Attorney Kimia Malahadi here to support with any legal questions you might have on this.
Thank you for a good presentation. And any questions for staff? Seeing none, we will now open up for a public hearing on this. Anyone in the public, the audience who would like to come up and make a comment on this is welcome to do so now. Seeing no one approaching right now, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for comments or motions.
Actually, I have a question of staff. I'm sorry, no, that's a different matter.
Okay.
Take it back. No, no question. Sorry.
Comment?
Yes. Commissioner Ward?
I just wanted to acknowledge how difficult it is to update all these statutes to the current laws that change all the time. And I know that we make it look like we're not appreciating or thinking about this, but it takes a lot of effort, and I know that. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Other comments or a motion?
I'll make the resolution to adopt, that print's really small and far away from me, the resolution. Here it is. Number, no number, Municipal Code Amendment Ordinance, Updating the Municipal Code provisions relating to family daycare homes to conform with California Health and Safety Code Sections one, five, nine, seven point four one. Wow, my eye doctor would be proud of me for that. So I move it's adopted as written there.
As a recommendation to City Council, correct?
Yes, recommendation to City Council.
Second.
Will the Secretary please call the role?
Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nate Ting?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And moving on to Project E, the Diablo Subaru Temporary Vehicle Storage Special Use Permit, Application Y twenty-one oh-two-oh. I'll start out with staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Simmer Gill, Senior Planner with the city. We are here tonight to consider the special use permit for Diablo Subaru Temporary Vehicle Storage. And the site that will be utilized for that storage is located at two-two-one-one North Main Street. The applicant representing the project, Bobby Kirk, is here tonight, as am I, to answer any questions that you may have after this presentation. And just to quickly orient you with the area, this vacant site is located at the intersection of North Main and North California. The surrounding uses consist primarily of commercial uses such as auto, retail uses, and office. There is residential uses located directly behind this parking lot. And the site is striped for fifty-six parking stalls. And the site is zoned mixed-use planned development, which does prohibit vehicle-related uses such as vehicle storage. However, certain land uses such as temporary inventory vehicle storage, which does not specifically fit into the existing zoning classifications due to its unique nature and temporary nature. The zoning ordinance does provide a mechanism through a special use permit allowing the Commission tonight to approve such uses if the Planning Commission does determine that this use serves a necessary function for the community. The site has remained vacant for years, except for occasional parking of vehicles and food trucks that were also approved through previous special use permits. And so Diablo Subaru is requesting the special use permit for the overflow vehicles to be temporarily stored at this location, two-two-one-one North Main, as there are space constraints at their primary dealership that's located at twenty-six forty-six North Main Street, which is less than a mile away from this location. They will be parking a maximum of fifty-six vehicles on-site as indicated in their business operating plan that's included as Exhibit Eight tonight. And if the Planning Commission does approve the use, then the temporary storage would be allowed for a maximum of twenty-four months. And all of the vehicles will be parked in the striped parking stalls that you see on this exhibit. And again, in the business operating plan, the applicant has stated that the daily deliveries between the dealership site, the dealership and the site will be limited to a maximum of ten visits per day. And when space does become available at the dealership, the vehicles will then be returned for detailing and display. And as part of the Attachment One draft resolution tonight, we did incorporate some conditions. So the temporary storage, again, limited to twenty-four months. The drop-up, drop-off, and pickup of these vehicles will occur on-site. Therefore, making sure it doesn't impede the traffic flow when transporting these vehicles. And they will be stored in a very orderly appearance to reduce the look of a storage yard. And no sales advertisement information will be allowed to be affixed on the vehicles. And the site will be maintained free of any trash or debris. And then the other condition is that no use of car alarms would be allowed to locate vehicles on the site. And in order to approve a special use permit, the Planning Commission must make the standard conditional use permit findings before you, to the left of the slide. And there is one special use permit finding that does indicate that if the use provides a necessary service to the community, staff does believe that this project meets all of these findings, given the site's proximity to the main dealership and several other auto-oriented businesses. The temporary presence of the stored vehicles would not negatively impact the character of the surrounding area. And the storage will generate minimal traffic and will not impose adverse impacts on adjacent properties. Also, the sales, transactions, and services will continue to occur at the primary dealership site and not on this location. And the use will provide a service, as the proposal allows for temporary use of a site for a business to store overflow vehicles without imposing any negative impacts on adjoining properties. And it will also contribute to the economic vitality of the area, providing a beneficial use of an existing otherwise vacant site. And with that, staff does recommend that Planning Commission move to adopt the draft resolution approving the special use permit for a temporary off-site vehicle storage for a period of twenty-four months at two-two-one-one North Main Street. I did want to mention that we received one correspondence, and that should be a part of your agenda packet. And I did reply back to the applicant. He basically had questions about what is a more viable use that could go on the site, and if apartment buildings would be allowed. So I responded accordingly. But if you have any follow-up questions to that, I'm happy to respond. And that is all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? One question, Commissioner Anderson?
Following up on that possibility. Do you know how long the property has been vacant?
The property has, I think, since twenty, since it was, there was a restaurant that used to operate on-site, and then because of a fire, it was destroyed. And since then, there's been no actual development on-site. I believe I have that information in my staff report, so let me just get that date for you. Glad I included it. Yeah, since twenty twelve. So there's really been no actual use on-site. And as I mentioned to the applicant, to the, sorry, that the member of the public that sent in the letter is, there was, in twenty sixteen, there was a developer that came forward for a residential development. The entitlements were approved, but the project was never built. And I think it's because of just the constraints of that parcel. I think the depth of the parcel is very, it's very narrow, so it didn't pencil out. That was the last actual application we got, other than special use permits.
That answers my next question. I have one more, though. Do you know how far it is actually from North Main Street and what the access would be if that were to be developed in some significant distance?
How far it would be from where?
From North Main Street, from the entrance to that parcel.
We have the city engineer here. He made... We have the city engineer here. He may have a response to that.
Good evening.
An approximate number would be five.
Ryan Cook, senior engineer with the city. So to clarify a little bit in terms of the distance to North Main Street, it's, because it's, the property is right along North Main Street, right where it splits off from North Main and California.
Ah.
So access to that site is challenging, because it is a right turn in and out only. There's no access to northbound, North Main Street. So in order to get going north, you'd have to travel onto California and then left onto Pringle, left onto Main.
I'm familiar with that detour. Thank you. Other questions of staff? I do have one. I vaguely remember that sometime in the recent past, we made an adjustment to the setback of that parcel to actually restrict the width of North Main, California at the time.
It was, it was continued item, because I believe the planning commissioners believed more information or more study needed to be done. So the applicant never came back with any changes, or the direction that was given to them. We didn't see any revisions to that. So that's, it's like, not an active application. But yes, that, that did come before, but never moved forward.
Okay, so we don't, we have not made a decision on restricting or giving a different setback on that?
Correct.
Thank you.
No action was taken.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have opened the public hearing on this matter, and we'll start out with the applicant, if you'd like to make a presentation or make any comments.
Thank you for hearing us. Bobby Kirk, I'm property manager for Lithia Motors. We own Diablo Subaru. So no, again, we are just happy to be here today, answering any questions that you have as far as how we operate the site. So if any questions for Ward, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for him? No, I guess not.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public would like to make a comment on this project? Seeing none, we will close public hearing and bring it back to the commission. It's comments or motion time, people? Yeah, go ahead.
So I will say that, you know, I was kind of interested to see that. It was a, you know, although the proposed use is going to be a parking lot for storing the vehicles temporarily, I did have the same observation, though. Oh, yeah, it is right by one of the tallest buildings in the city, you know. Wouldn't it make more sense to have it be developed? But it seems like, due to the constraints, maybe the market's not working out the way it should be, or maybe the, whatever proposals have come forward haven't really worked out. It is nice to see that the parcel of land is being put to some sort of use, rather than remaining vacant.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner Anders?
I, just to that point, I think this particular special use permit doesn't really affect the future development, since anybody who wanted to develop, you know, starting tomorrow, probably wouldn't have anything, you know, ready to go before this special use permit was done. So I think, you know, this might give an opportunity for someone with a longer view to, to do the background, to get something built there if they want to.
Other comments or a motion?
I'd like to move that we adopt the resolution regarding Diablo Subaru Temporary Vehicle Storage Special Use Permit, application number Y21-020, 2211 North Main Street.
Second.
Will the secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nating?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Dia Inoche Restaurant Project. And we'll start out with staff report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kimya Mahalati. I am an assistant city attorney for the city of Walnut Creek. And I'm here to, tonight, to present on behalf of staff, this item to review the administrative use permit for the restaurant and bar establishment Dia Inoche at 1411 Locust Street. So I will be presenting this case on behalf of staff. And after the presentation, there will, of course, be an opportunity for questions. And this evening, I have with me tonight, from the Community Development Department, Simmer Gill, right here, and Captain Ryan Hibbs from the Police Department. And they'll be available to answer any follow-up questions as well that might come up. So tonight, staff's request is to have the planning commission review the operation of Dia Inoche for conformance with the conditions of approval that are set forth in their AUP, to take public testimony and make written findings that Dia Inoche is operating in violation of the conditions of approval of its AUP, and respectfully requesting that the planning commission decide to revoke Dia Inoche's AUP, which would require them to cease the sales, service, and consumption of alcoholic beverages at this location. And if they would like to resume sales, service, and consumption, they would have to apply for an administrative use permit. So just to orient us with the site, the establishment is located at 1411 Locust Street in Walnut Creek. It's along the west side of Locust Street. It's between a three-story mixed-use building to the north and a vacant corner lot to the south. The establishment includes 2,565 square feet of interior dining, with 661 square feet for outdoor dining, so a total of 3,226 square feet. The total occupancy is, allows for 161 persons, with 147 indoor occupancy and 14 outdoor occupancy. And Dia Inoche, sorry, Dia Inoche currently operates under a Type 47 license, which is for on-sale beer, wine, and distilled spirits issued by the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control for onsite sales and consumption of alcoholic beverages. And the current hours of operation are from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily. The general plan designates this site as a pedestrian retail, and it's similarly zoned as pedestrian retail. And in this area, an AUP is required to serve alcohol at eating and drinking establishments until 11:00 p.m. So prior to the operation of the restaurant, Dia Inoche, at this location, the business Redux Lounge had actually been operating under a deemed approved status, I think from approximately 1988 to 2016. In 2012, Redux Lounge operated under a deemed approved status at this location, which it was given pursuant to Ordinance 2109, that was adopted in 2012. In 2016, the planning commission found Redux Lounge to be operating as a public nuisance, which was in violation of the deemed approved performance standards. And so they thereby revoked the deemed approved status of Redux Lounge, which immediately stopped their ability to sell alcoholic beverages at this location. After that, any operator of an establishment at this address that wished to re-establish the ability to sell and serve alcoholic beverages would need to apply for an administrative use permit if alcoholic beverage service were to end on or before 11:00 p.m., or a conditional use permit if service were to end after 11:00 p.m., as set forth in the municipal code. So in July of 2017, the city granted AUP number Y17056 to Urban Alley/310 Eatery to serve alcoholic beverages to its patrons, which is included in your packet as Attachment 3. And the hours of operation set forth in their business plan were, as follows up here, so Tuesday through Thursday, it was 11:30 to 9:00 p.m. Friday through Saturday, 11:30 a.m. to 11:30 p.m., with alcohol service to stop at 11:00 p.m. Sunday, 12 to 8:00 p.m. And Monday, they were closed. It's not clear exactly when Urban Alley ceased operations at this location, but we do know that it was at some point between July 2017 and January 2020, because in January 2020, Dia Inoche submitted an, excuse me, an application for an AUP. And the municipal code requires that any substantial change to the mode or character of operation of an existing alcoholic beverage establishment must first modify any existing AUP. And a substantial change in mode or character of operation is defined to include any extension of the hours of sales, service, or consumption by 30 minutes or more. So accordingly, on January 7, 2020, this is why Dia Inoche submitted an application to amend the AUP. And this was because they were proposing to change the hours of operation to Monday through Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily. And their proposal also included live entertainment from Thursdays through Saturdays from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. And so the city approved this application in March of 2020 under AUP Y20010, which is also included in your packets as Attachment 4. And since the 2020 AUP is still inclusive of the prior hours of operation that were granted under the 2017 AUP, and it in fact provides broader hours of operation, as well as adding an additional ability to allow for live entertainment on certain days and times, this, the 2020 AUP effectively supersedes the prior 2017 AUP, thereby rendering the 2017 one ineffective. All this to say, for purposes of tonight's hearing, the 2020 AUP is the operative AUP and is the AUP that is the subject of this hearing. And just to provide with a visual reference, this is the floor plan that Dia Inoche submitted as part of their business plan for their 2020 AUP application. So as we all know, granting of an AUP does not come without conditions. So the, the AUP for this site consists of a total of 21 conditions. We're not going to go through all 21 of them, don't worry. But the ones we are going to be focusing on tonight are set forth, because these are the ones that triggered the need for this hearing this evening. And that is the third condition in their AUP, which restricts the ability to sell, serve, or consume alcohol on the premises after 11:00 p.m. daily, as well as their seventh condition of approval, which requires that the use shall not create objectional conditions that constitute a nuisance, which is defined to mean disturbance of the peace, public drunkenness, drinking in public, et cetera, et cetera. So since December of 2023, Walnut Creek Police Department has had to respond a number of times to this location, and have observed a total of 23 AUP violations. And these arise from 16 different incidents or nights that required the generation of a police report. And the reason why there's more AUP violations than police reports is because certain evenings, more than one type of AUP violation was observed. So of those 23 AUP violations, 14 of them have been alcohol-related, which is to mean that the sale, service, or consumption of alcohol was observed past 11:00 p.m. Three of these alcohol-related violations were passed 2:00 a.m., which is actually in violation of California state law. Five were for excessive noise violations, in violation of the seventh condition that we just went over. And four involved public intoxication, three of which were observations of intoxication of the owner, and did include, in fact, one arrest of the owner for public intoxication. So I know this is really horrible to look at, but bear with me, I will guide us through. So again, the total AUP violations are 23, but what you see up here is a list of 16 different events that generated reports by PD. So I want to highlight a number of these. So number three, which was December 17, 2023, where staff was serving and patrons were consuming alcoholic beverages after 2:00 a.m., which is in violation of California state law. And the business was observed to still be open at 2:17 in the morning. May 4 of 2024, there was a loud noise complaint that required PD's response. And staff was warned by officers, and they had to come back multiple times. I won't bore you with reading through all of the details of it, but they had to come back multiple times, and they still had to come back at 2:27 a.m. An officer noted that the lights were still on, and patrons could be seeing drinking from what appeared to be beer bottles. So again, another violation of California state law. The very next night, May 5, 2024, staff was observed to be serving patrons alcohol and allowing consumption at 3:00 in the morning, which, again, in violation of California state law. Skipping ahead to August 25, 2024, at 12:30 a.m., officers were dispatched to a loud music complaint. Staff was warned for that violation. And the officers also discovered patrons were still consuming alcohol. And the owner, Jose Ruffridge, displayed signs of alcohol intoxication. He claimed he was not working at the time. Skipping ahead to September 6, 2024, again, Jose Ruffridge, the owner, was observed to be intoxicated and was, in fact, on this evening, arrested for public intoxication. On September 20, 2024, a few weeks later, again, the owner, Jose Ruffridge, displayed signs of alcohol intoxication. He claimed he was not working, but officers did observe that he was wearing his work apron and was giving direction to his employees, which is a violation of Business and Professions Code 24200, subsection A, which disallows bar and restaurant staff to be intoxicated while working on the premises. And I also want to highlight, and we'll get to this in a moment, but the city sent a first notice of violation letter on June, I believe it was June 26. And after that, you'll notice that from August 25 until October 26 of this year, after issuing the first notice of violation letter, there were 10 additional AUP violations noted. And also, if you'll look at the proximity between the dates of the violations, they are pretty much every weekend since August 25, and sometimes multiple times in one weekend. So I'm highlighting this because scaling back their hours wouldn't, staff doesn't believe that would necessarily work, because you can see there are a number of violations that are past state law closing times, and there are many past 11:00 p.m. closing times. And it simply shows a pattern of bad management and bad business practices. And there are also a number of violations that do not have to do with serving alcohol past 11:00 p.m. There are enough instances of operating in violation of the seventh condition of approval to indicate this is not just an hours of operations issue. There's been excessive noise complaints, there's been public intoxication complaints, and there's just a lot of evidence here to indicate that this is a, more of a bad management practice, rather than simply scaling back their hours to allow them to come into conformance with the AUP's conditions. So as I just mentioned, June 26, the city issued the first notice of violation letter, notifying them that they were operating in violation of their AUP. Specifically, we pointed out that it was in violation of condition number three, serving past 11:00 p.m. We also notified them that additional violations could result in a public hearing and potential modification or revocation of their AUP. As I stated before, from August 25 to October 26, PD documented 10 additional instances of AUP violations, which amounted to 16 total AUP violations. Again, some nights, multiple violations were observed in one evening. And so subsequently, on October 30, the city issued the second notice of violation. the city issued the second notice of violation letter and the notice of public hearing. To date, Dia Inochi has only contacted city staff. I want to, it was once, as of today, it's now been twice, where staff provided factual information about tonight's proceedings. But I want to emphasize that staff has not had any productive communications with Dia Inochi regarding any proactive steps that the business can take to address their AUP violations. There was radio silence after issuance of the first notice of violation letter. And after the second one as well, it was nothing to indicate any intent to try to correct any of these behaviors or practices. And so the municipal code provides that the planning commission may modify or revoke the permit or entitlement upon making one or more of the following findings. And we've listed the two pertinent ones here. So the first one would be the use or user is in violation of a condition of approval of the permit. So here it would be the AUP or other laws or regulations. So as I've mentioned before, in the past eleven months, there have been a total of twenty-three AUP violations. And there have also been three in violation of California state law for those violations that occurred after two AM. And many of these violations have, I'm sorry. The evidence presented here indicates that this condition, number three, for consumption of alcohol past eleven PM has been violated on at least fourteen different occasions. In addition, condition number seven requires that the use of the establishment shall not cause any objectionable conditions that constitute a nuisance. And evidence here also indicates this condition has been violated on at least eight different occasions, with five consisting of excessive noise and three consisting of intoxication of staff. The second consideration for the commission is that the use is being conducted contrary to the public health, safety, and welfare due to changes in the conduct of the use, changes in the use, in uses of the vicinity or otherwise. And so again, condition number seven here would be applicable because it involves five incidents of excessive noise, some of which necessitated repeated responses by PD in one evening despite prior warnings given during that same night. And there have been at least three documented instances in which the owner appeared to be intoxicated while on the premises, including that one evening which led to his, his arrest. And moreover, these violations have occurred, as I said, within a short span of time despite repeated responses and warnings by, by PD. As I said, after the first issuance of the notice of violation letter in June, there were sixteen additional AUP violations that were documented by PD. And so given the repeated responses by PD and the fact that they continue to occur despite an issuance of a formal notice of violation letter and given the fact that the business has shown that it, the lack of productive communications with staff to attempt to maintain compliance with the AUP, the business has shown that it's unable to abide by the conditions set forth in the AUP. And these violations exhibit safety issues for patrons and the general public as well as the welfare of the surrounding area. And so both the nature of Dia Inochi's AUP violations and the closeness in proximity of the violations indicate that the use and operation of Dia Inochi is being conducted in a manner that's contrary to the public health, peace, safety, and welfare of the persons residing in, in our city. And so staff simply recommends that the planning commission revoke Dia Inochi's AUP. This action would cease the sale of alcoholic beverages at this address until another AUP or CUP for the sales, and service, and consumption of alcoholic beverages is granted. Despite the recorded efforts by staff and the police department to address the violations of Dia Inochi's AUP, Dia Inochi has shown that it's unable to operate in compliance with the conditions of its approval. So if the planning commission were to revoke Dia Inochi's AUP, Dia Inochi would have to immediately stop the sale of alcoholic beverages and they would have to apply for a new AUP effective ten days after any recommendation to do so. And so with that, I will open up the floor to questions or comments. And I've got Simmergill and Captain Hibbs here as well.
Thank you for a very detailed presentation. We'll start out with questions for staff.
Thank you for the presentation, Camilla. I just wanted to clarify, on the slide with the WCPD summary of, suppose their citation, events. So I did notice that some of these events had asterisks by them. So number five, number seven, and number twelve. And I wanted to know what the significance of those were.
I will defer to Captain Hibbs on that.
Good evening, Commissioners, Ryan Hibbs, Operations Captain, Police Department. That, the asterisks, they all denote a violation of state law. So it's not just an AUP violation in, in all of those cases. It's either something very egregious, such as the staff displaying signs of intoxication or it's something that violates ABC law such as opening past and serving past two AM.
Thank you.
Other questions of staff? Seeing none, we will open up to a public hearing. Is there anyone here representing Dia Inochi? Would you like to make a presentation? Please go on down and state your name, please. You're right there, yeah.
Jose Ruffridge, owner and manager of Dia Inochi, and thank you guys for your time. First time being here, it's awesome to be here in front of me, the council. And first of all, with all your respect, ladies and gentlemen, and Sergeant, ladies, I would love to say sorry for this misunderstanding and sorry for all this. I just don't know how to say or what to say, but I'm really terribly sorry for this miscommunication as well too because I am at the end that I feel like I'm trapped. But all these stories and fairy tales, you know, when I meet with my neighbors every day, I go to establishments every day, is everything okay? Are we doing something wrong? Are we hurting you guys? Oh, Jose, you guys are doing good. Thank you for being there. I just don't understand, with all your respect, ladies and gentlemen, I don't understand that I, I called the ABC. What are we doing wrong? Jose, there's nothing in their records here. I called Martinez for the arrest. With all your respect, ladies and gentlemen, the Chucky Cheese arrest that I got, I wasn't even intoxicated. Called the ABC, Jose, you okay? Is it okay for me to sit on the patio drinking a beer after I'm done? It's okay. Is it okay for my staff after we run and sweat like crazy? After we close to sort of have a beer? Yes, you can, but you cannot sell. Thank you, California ABC. I've been doing my homework too, sir, with all your respect, guys. You know, but I don't have like, I didn't came prepared. It's my first time, I didn't know what to expect. I didn't know, nothing, you know, what was going on tonight. And I mean, if we're going to talk about like, they talk about all these violations, twenty-six, twenty-five, I can go on and on and on in front of my door. All those violations that my neighbors are doing, but hey, I don't say anything. I just keep myself right in front of my door, protecting my customers, protecting my family, protecting my employees. Because other establishments like here, they go running. When something goes wrong, they go running to my place because I know, they know I'm going to protect them. They're not going to shut that down. I don't care, no one's coming in. All these, when it happens, the drive-by a couple of years ago, the gun, K forty-nine right here, what did they do? They went running to Jose, closed the door, no one's coming in, no one's coming in. Hey, let me in, no, sorry, I'm not putting nobody in danger, even my wife and kids that we worked there, that we built that place and I need, sir. Just like you asked, you know, maybe Jose, you have to change the floor, you have to do, you do that. We did it. You know, but with all your respect, ladies and gentlemen, as a father and as a citizen of Walnut Creek, we've been living here for fourteen years. I just, I don't know what to do. You know, I, I do not know how to deal with them. You know, I recall everything that I can recall, even friends, Jose, I want to be there. The good customers, law enforcements, federal agents that they come to my place and they love being there. And they don't just come for a drink, two drinks. They come there and stay for hours because they love the Inochi. They love the energy when you come in. You feel that you're in Mexico, not in Walnut Creek anymore. They love the food because it's authentic Mexican food. They love their drinks, yes, and we only do one ounce, we didn't do like everybody else. Can I get a shot? They give you what, two ounces, three ounces? I'm like, man, and when I go there, man, if I was the owner of this place, I would fire her right away, boom, like that. You know? But again, ladies and gentlemen, if I have all my notes and all my, which I can have my proof, will be this much compared to twenty-six violations that my neighbors are, you know, doing wrong. But I'm not a whistleblower, I'm not. I just keep to myself because I'm afraid for my family. I've been there to their operations, they don't even know who I am. And then when they find out who I am, they caught me. It's okay, no more friends, it's okay, I don't need friends like that. You know, I've been, my son doesn't come to work with me anymore because my neighbors. And it hurts me because he's a great cook, he's talented man, decorating that place and everything. But hey, sorry, you know, I love you, buddy, but you have to go home. He only works now a day, two days, a day, a week instead of having a good, you know, full-time job. So I hurt him, but I'm protecting him as well. You know, and all these violations against, against a lot, what was that? What were the cops? When they went in there and they stole my chairs and tables? And I called you guys, we're going to send somebody. My wife stayed for hours, never showed up, I said, you know what, bro, let's go. Then I can't come, then they never came. What were the cops? When you guys remember when they had the umbrellas of different colors? We had the outside on the street and it was all different colors. And they burning, I called the cops. What were the cops? Never showed up. I told my wife, don't worry about it, just smile. That's how we're going to beat them, smile back, say hi when they come by, say hi. Say hi, wave at them, we're going to beat them like that, but being nice, being ourselves. What happened later on? They burned my tree down. I called the cops, what were the trees? Where were the cops? Nowhere. I told my wife, smile, do not worry about it. Yes, it took us a long time, sir, because we saw, my kids and my wife, we saw them for hours in the living room to make, to create the tree. You guys remember that? How many people we brought into the community, tourists went over the place? Kathy, Hemaway, Jose, thank you for being here. There's people from nowhere coming here because of Dia Inochi to Walnut Creek. You know, after we opened, after doing that, and then, it was a couple of months ago, they went and broke our chairs and destroyed our chairs. Sure I do. Employees say, don't worry about it, my son, that, just throw them away, it's okay, don't worry about it, just, you know, let it go, man, just let it go, and whoever's doing this, let them enjoy themselves, it's okay. Just kind of keep smiling, be strong and stay strong. So guys, I'm sorry I don't have a presentation to, for you guys to see, to show. But it's hard, you know, when we as citizens and residents of Walnut Creek, you know, and they're like, they point at you for something that you're doing wrong, but they don't see what we do right. Supposedly we doing wrong. Believe me, guys, I know you don't know me now, I know you, and I know it's hard to believe, but I had my homework, man. There's nothing on the books in California state where we're there, it's wrong, that we're doing something wrong. There's people out there that are doing something wrong, but I don't say nothing because of, we afraid for my kids and family. You know, back in a few months ago, before the summer was over, you know, our youngest daughter, she's nineteen, in Mexico, right? Just like a teenager, nineteen years old, having a good time, right? What happened? She got brutally beat up, got raped, left on the streets. What were the cops over there in Mexico? We looked it up, we got a phone call from my mother-in-law, which is my wife's mom. Hey, we're going to find Natalia, it's been two days. And we call, we call, hey, go. My wife took her with my other two kids, they go to Bancroft. She flew right away, I said, no, just go, I'll take care of the rest and go, right? So we finally took her to the hospital, hey, she was raped, beat up. You know, I got pictures to prove it, but I believed in to make myself better, forgive the person. I meditate every morning at five AM to love, to continue going, right? And then all this, all these violations, I was like, oh my God. So we found out who it was, we looked it up on the internet, we searched it up, it's like, oh my God, it's one of the toughest narcos in the city where she was. So we like went to the cops, we not can do nothing, why? Because we are afraid for my families too, that if we're going to arrest them, they're going to come, we can choose them who arrest them. You know how they are over there at the Knox, they're really, really scary, man. So I had to go with it. I didn't know what to do, I just told my wife, stay strong, just keep her away, hide her so she cannot go and testify or say whatever, whatever. But it was really, really, really tough that I wish I no parent go through that what we went through. And then all this stuff happened, man, so I mean, I'm still, we're still going through that, you know? What happened back before the summer? And I was just, I don't know, man, honestly, sir, guys, ladies, gentlemen, it's just salam, man, to digest for me and so many things that we did and we have done, right, in this community. You know, all our kids went through Bancroft, they went to Foothill, Norgay. And what happened a couple of years ago, if you guys remember, when my kids were going to Norgay, the number one high school in the nation, Norgay. Drugs, selling drugs in the high schools. Norgay was the number one in the nation, CNN, NBC, number one New York Times, Norgay. I was like, oh my God. And I asked my son, yeah, that is right, there's your pills in the bathrooms. Where are the T-shirts? Where are the cops? They're, they're there, on side, right? Guys, I mean, that's a humble father, that's a humble person that we, I am. And you guys here, I know I'm one against everybody here. And I don't have a presentation to show you. All I have is my worth and me and my honesty. And that's all I have to offer, man. You know, they say I was intoxicated, I don't think so. The cop, Sergeant Martinez, laugh on my face, why are you here? How did you tell me? I even myself turned around, we here arrest me. Stop resisting, I did it myself, I turned myself around. Stop resisting, it's, it's, come on, man, I'm not resisting. I'm just giving you myself, here you go, take me. Did they have blood tests on me? No. Breathalyzer test? No. But it's okay, I was like, it's okay. And the whole team, they were just shaking their head at him. And what happened when they threw me in? That guy just run to his car, when, and I saw him running to his car and getting, boom, took off. Maybe because he felt bad, maybe because he did something wrong. I don't know, but it's okay, I took his fault. I took it. What happened over there? Sue them. Why would I sue that city where I live in? Why would I sue that city where my kids went to school, grew up, born here? Why would I do that? Stupid, right, to me, as a citizen of Walnut Creek. You know, so all this stuff, man, I mean, I don't know what to tell you, guys. When I bought the place, they told me, yes, you're able to, you can open it to I am, this and that, and this happened. And I asked my neighbors, the people that have been here for a long time, no, Jose, they did you wrong. You know, I was like, well, too bad. And I did more research, no, Jose, those shady people that they used to own, when they sold it, they were very shady, very shady people. But again, I mean, I took it, right? I bought the place, you know, and I make the best of it. And I'm still trying to. We've been closed for two weeks. It's just to maybe be given pleasure or hopefully that, you know, by my side. You see, go, it's closed right now. It's just hurting us, yes, it's hurting my family, it's hurting my landlords. It's just ladies and gentlemen, council. It's just, ladies and gentlemen, council, you know, in your eyes, in your ears, maybe on the black sheep of Warner Creek, but I don't believe so. And I feel that they crucify me upside down for nothing, man. You know, when we are able to have a beer after work. It's okay, Jose. But I can go in my patio and sit there and have a beer. Oh, no. And the cop said, no, you're working. I'm off work. I'm already off work, man. I'm just wearing, what's wrong with wearing this? You're wearing that. So why? What's wrong with that? It's not against a lot, wearing an apron. What about when the, all the employees from neighbors that come to Dia Inocia get drunk, they go back to work? What are they talking about that? No one says nothing about that. What about when I go on my break, go support my neighbors? There's the line cook standing over here, doing cocaine in front of your eyes. Where's that there? True story. But Jose, it's the black sheep of Warner Creek, right? Let's crucify him upside down. Over there, the other, they're so drunk to my kid. That's why he's not working with you anymore. Our neighbor. I hate him, now I don't hate him. It's also my son's fault, too. He made that decision. So that's why every day, we used to work, go home, and I don't want you here.
Thank you. Thank you for talking to us. And is there anyone else in the public that would like to come make a comment?
A question.
What question? Commissioner.
The staff report discussed number of violations. I looked at the broader question of just police calls. It's a larger number of those, so do a little bit better analysis on that. One of the things that we look at in cases like this is when presented with evidence that there's been problems, you know, what's the response? You know, have things improved? Have, you know, is there a process underway that's gonna make things better? But if you look at the six months between late December and late June, there was violation, a police call, excuse me, a police call about every six days. And that's a lot. But then at the end of June, you got a notice of violation. That's kind of your, you know, early warning system, you know? There's a problem here, it's gotta be fixed. But in the next four months, the frequency of the police calls increased by about 50%. So I just wanna give you a chance, if you have an explanation for why you had a documented problem, and the police were there frequently, they told you about that, said, you know, here's your notice, you know, you gotta fix things up. And things got worse. What's the explanation for that?
You know, is the, one of the 26 violations is a violation when someone called at 8:30, 8:15, it was a Tuesday or Monday or Tuesday, that there was a woman being beat inside Dia Inocia. You sit on there? The cops went crazy, boom. There were couples, okay, are age average, he's some 30 and up. Nah, I only admit young kids like the other guys know. This is trouble. So, sir, so there were, the cops went there, it was about four or five, they went there inside. Hey, what happened? No, we got a phone call that it was a woman getting beat up, hit inside Dia Inocia. Where? Nothing. And they stood there for 30 minutes, and the people got scared, and they left. The customers got scared, they left. So back to your question, sir, great question, you know? So, sir, I don't know why people calling on me. People come in as business owners, I say to the employees, we're gonna sue you because you stealing our customers. I'm not stealing nobody's customers. I'm just outside greeting people. People are coming in, I'm not greeting, no, I'm not stealing nobody, sir. I got, we got, we believe who's been calling cops, you know? Somebody got fired for, you know, a couple of reasons. Number one, stealing, you know? So we kinda know, believe, sir, with all your respect, like all these.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
Since you got the notice of violation in June, have you put any immediate changes in the way you operate the business? Changes in the way that you, you know, deal with people after 11, let's say? You know, changes in security arrangements? You know, what kind of changes did you make at that point? At least try to improve the situation?
Yes, exactly. Good, thank you, sir. Well, again, I mean, we started doing the last call 10:30 now, or since I started, 10:30. The cops go there, go walk by there. I mean, I just, with all your respect, I do not understand. And this is the first time I heard this about a CPU and everything, and noticed that, my first time, honestly, with all your respect, you know? And the rest of the times, I don't know, everything just changes, sir. I have no idea, really. But we are doing that now. We focus and put in just a buffet menu, and that's it, keep it simple and easy, you know? Also, maybe next month, we all ready? Just simple buffet, get in and get out and buy, you know? I'm tired, because I'm just, sir, this kills you.
I'm not really getting the answer to the question I asked, but.
Yeah. So I mean, I really, sir, I don't know why this is happening. I really don't.
I mean, all I'm hearing is there weren't any violations, everything was fine. I don't know why people are calling.
I don't.
You got the notice of violation, so you did know about this. This isn't the first time you heard about it. You got the notice of violation, that was in June.
Yes, sir.
And things have gotten worse.
Hey, so that's what they said, right? Again, I'm just being, you know.
I think I have the answers that I'm gonna get. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Ward.
So first of all, we really do appreciate your coming and talking to us personally. That does mean a lot to us, and I do appreciate that, and I'm also very sorry for what appears to have been a very difficult summer for you and your family. So I understand how hard that could be for you. I'm wondering, though, typically in situations where people get a very serious notice of violation, and there's repeated communication with both city staff and the police department that we see the business owner working with the city or the police department to try and figure out exactly what's going on and come up with some sort of mitigation plan or correction of the situation. And it sounds like you didn't really contact or communicate with the police department or city staff during the, at least since June or before, with regard to this. Is there a reason you didn't, or you didn't know, or?
Exactly, no. I did find out when they put the poster, yellow poster on the window. And all this week and last week, I've been calling Captain, we call it, leaving voicemails to find out the reason, what's going on, to work and meet face to face, what am I doing wrong, really? You know, because all these phone calls, it's killing us. It really is. You know, so if we close, I'm gonna, you know, let my employees, where are they gonna go to work? You know how many people come to us to ask for work from Danville San Ramon every day? So I care about them, too, you know? It's about them, too, and that's just me and my family.
No, I understand and appreciate that, but my question is, you got a very serious notice of violation in June.
Yes, ma'am.
And apparently, really didn't do much in response to that. And then you got another one, you know? And, you know, I appreciate that for the last week you've been calling to try and figure out what we're doing here tonight, but these were not minor citations. This is like a major thing, and it seemed like it was kind of ignored. And so that, that's of concern to us. I also understand that there is a monthly group of bar owners in Walnut Creek that meets on a regular basis to discuss these kind of issues, to share ideas and, you know, safety and security plans, to coordinate with the police department and generally try to make sure that the entire downtown is operated in a way that's both beneficial to your business and to the community, and doesn't cause a disproportionate amount of activity by the police department. And I am told, and I don't know, that's why I'm gonna ask you, whether you have attended those meetings and whether you participate in that?
Yes, I have.
Because I think that kind of peer support can be very helpful with regard to figuring out the complicated statutes and other requirements.
Yes, I have, but if I'm adding a little bit to it, it's different when you're there and outside in the field.
Definitely, yeah.
You know, it's different when we meet, you know, and sometimes they send the managers and myself, hey, where are the owners, really? They need to be here. I don't say anything, I don't talk, because if I talk, ah, then they go against me. So I just keep my mouth shut, again. When they do that, I just keep my mouth shut, stay there, right? But when they go to the meetings, no one really talks the truth. No one tells the truth.
Okay. Well, all right. I've never been to one of the meetings, so I don't know. I'm interested in some of your comments that you made where you were discussing the hours of operation that you were supposed to have, and it seems like the AUP is pretty clear that there were, you know, the latest you would be allowed to serve alcohol would be 11 o'clock, and yet you were talking about, you know, other state laws that would allow you to serve until 2:00. At least it was my impression that you thought you weren't doing anything wrong serving that late. Was there some confusion on your part with regard to what the AUP actually said in terms of those hours of operation?
I never knew about what was a CPA, or a CPU, sorry about that. Never heard about it, never knew about it until they talked about it. You know, so that's why I was all confused, going through the year, going through everything, I was all over. Who's wrong? Who's right? Am I right? They're wrong? Are they hating on me? Are they? My mind was going crazy. I couldn't even sleep.
So you're saying you had no idea what the city permit was with regard to your hours of operation?
When before, now, like with this stuff, I was like, I've never seen this stuff before. I like, I was sitting there listening, oh, my God, this, all this, it's new to me. And I'm being honest with you, I'm being real, and I'm not telling you a Chuck E. Cheese story, it's for real, you know? And, I mean, we work with them, we close at 11, 10:30, last call, we sit down, hey, guys, sit down, because we sweat, man. We work our butt off, and we have the right to sit down after work, we close, have a beer, sit there, talk about it. How was the night? What did we wrong? What did we wrong? How can we do better next tomorrow? What can we do better tomorrow? You know, it's important to us, so keep, you know, can survive, you know, so.
I understand, but it is a little hard to believe that, you know, operating for so many years, you were unaware of the permit that you were issued and the hours that were, you know, specifically stated in that.
Well, I mean, we kept it before, it was 2:00, 2:00 AM before. That's why I was confused, man, what's going on? You know, really? And never had a problem, never. Now phone call, Officer Prada, Preda, hey, Jose, good job. You guys are being quiet. Thank you. 1:30, 12 AM, 1 AM, you guys are being quiet. Officer Garcia, Jose, you job, you guys doing good. Officer Rosas, you guys are, yeah, we're good. Thank you, guys. Checking up, announced, doing the 12, 12:30, 1:00, you guys are good, yeah. And then I always knew we closed at 2:00 AM. So I'm sorry, man, you know, I answered your question right or wrong. I'm confused myself.
All right. Well, I appreciate your coming here and answering our questions, so thank you for that.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. You may sit down.
Thank you guys for your time.
And anyone else of the public would like to make a comment on this? Are you interested in making a comment? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for comments and deliberations. Or a motion.
Okay, I'd like to move that we adopt Walnut Creek Planning Commission Revocation of Administrative Use Permit Y20-010, Dia Inocia Restaurant and Bar, 1411 Locust Street.
Second.
Will the secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nateen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
A motion passes.
Thank you. And moving on to commission considerations. Do we have any considerations?
None by staff.
Okay, thank you. And on to item six, commission members or staff reports or announcements. Seeing none, we will now be adjourned.